Good morning, everyone. I'll call the August 26, 2014 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I will note that we have a quorum. I would like everyone to stand, and we have Mr. Brent McLeary from Legacy Church to do the invocation, and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow. Father, we come to you right now in the name of Jesus, and we ask you for wisdom, Lord God, upon these men, to lead with County and southwest Virginia, Lord God, into prosperity, Lord God, into peace, and, Father, give them wisdom, Lord, to direct the steps of this county, Lord God, to where you would like it to go. Father, we honor you, and we ask you to send business to this area, Lord God, that we might have increased, that the people might prosper as well, and, Father, thank you that your peace is upon everyone here today, Lord God, as we go through this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, everyone. Mr. Hall is absent today. He's a brand-new daddy again, and we wish him well and his wife and the new one. He's got a long road ahead of him, so we all wish him well. We'll move right into citizens' time. There's nobody signed up for citizens' time, so we'll move along in agenda with the minutes of the previous meeting of August 12. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye with one absent. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. I have a motion to pay the invoices. Have a second. Has any invoice need to be discussed? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes with six with one absent. Next item on the agenda is old business. We have a resolution, anti-littering resolution. With County Resolution 2014-15 endorsing the anti-littering campaign. Whereas the With County, Virginia is a naturally beautiful place in the Blue Ridge Mountains with great diversity of hardwood, pine forest, and the New River. And whereas littering along our roadways mars the traditional beauty of our county, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors is dedicated to restoring cleanliness and attractive appearance to our community and countryside, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors wishes to spearhead litter and trash prevention outreach and educational program, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors encourage all residents to participate in local cleanup events in their communities and for law enforcement to strictly enforce litter laws, and therefore, now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors assembled in this regular session this 26th day of August 2014 is hereby endorse an anti-littering campaign and recognize the efforts taken by all to continually work towards trash-free roads, streams, parks, commercial and residential areas of With County, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors. I have a motion to accept the resolution.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution passes. Mr. Dalton, is there anything else under old business to discuss?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on to reports. I have the treasurer report. Mr. Crockett.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Sam.
I'm our consolidated account report. I'm a fumble thinker more than I can hold on to anything. I've dropped this 41 times. On our consolidated account report, we currently have $44,725,000 in all of our accounts. Our general fund balance is $24,547,000. And as far as taxes go, we did get our real estate loaded up yesterday, and we have $9,814,000 worth of real estate, which is about $614,000 more than what we budgeted this year, so hopefully we'll do good on that. And that's really all I have right now. We're just working on getting ready to get the tax tickets out. Anybody got any questions?
If I may, before you leave, Fay, come on up. This affects both of us. At our budget meeting the other day, we had a long discussion about PPTRA assessments. There's been all kinds of legal advice going around, and from local to state to associations. I think as a summary, it turns out that, correct me if I'm wrong, those, all those emails, everybody agrees that all vehicles have to be assessed. The bottom line, though, is under PPTRA, the qualifying vehicles turns out to be a judgment or call by the Commissioner of Revenue of how PPTRA. And just talked to Fay before the meeting, and I think on, maybe Fay, it's better for you to, instead of me putting words in your mouth, my understanding is that registered vehi-- you're gonna say that registered vehicles that are for private use qualify for PPTRA, and everything else is non-qualified? Is that, did I not, did I stumble or make that wrong?
No, it says, and what I got back was that the PPTRA indicates that the determination of whether a vehicle qualifies for PPTRA is made by the Commissioner of Revenue of the county. Then it goes under the codes and everything. I won't read all those code numbers. But it says, in determining whether a vehicle is qualifying, the Commissioner of Revenue must rely on the registration of such vehicle with the department. And on the, on the, before the date, the Certified Personal Property Tax Book is still required to be provided to the treasurer. The commissioner shall identify each qualifying vehicle and its value to the treasurer. It is my opinion that this code is, it is up to the discretion of the commissioner to determine if a vehicle is qualifying vehicle with PPTRA. I feel that a vehicle that has been, has not been registered and is titled only and is sitting behind someone's outbuilding or under a tree or something is no longer being used as personal use. They're not driving it, it's not registered, so it's my determination that they don't qualify for PPTRA. If you as the board has a recommendation of how to work this out, with that going up on everyone else's taxes, 30 cents plus per hundred, I will look at your recommendation and consider your opinion on this before we print the book.
Okay, let me summarize what I think I understand. Because I read this, and I did get, too, that all vehicles are taxed, that the state does not allow us, you know, not to do that. And then I sort of got from, yeah, the same thing you, but, so then we will, as far as personal property tax, all vehicles, yeah, titled, registered, whatever.
They'll be taxed.
Right. But for the PPTRA, we're basically doing it like we've always done.
Registered vehicles only.
Which will, you know, allow that PPTRA to go to people who are actually driving vehicles.
That's right.
And it will not have a de facto increase on personal property taxes.
That's right.
I'm good with that.
Because I just don't think that a car that's sitting in somebody's field or something, I don't think it's a personal use vehicle, and, you know, that's the way my determination is.
It's personal property, but not personal use type thing.
Personal use.
So, so.
You've got a list to coin.
So, people that, that, the title vehicles just get a claim bill for what they owe for the personal property with no relief.
No relief on those, and I don't think they should have a relief. I don't think it should eat the relief up for everybody else.
Okay, as we, the second part of that whole issue is further in that statement which affects the treasurer, the, either the $15 or the $20 tax bill, are we gonna send tax bills to everyone, and what is the cost of that thing?
Send the bill out, and everything's at about 58 cents a person. To send the bill, postage and printing.
If you're sending the bill already to someone that has, say, a registered vehicle for a newer model vehicle, and they get one of these that are just titled.
They're $7,500.
That's coming on the same bill, is that right?
Yeah, there's about $7,500 or something, David's come up with it. We are currently not taxing. Yeah, the taxing, let's go back just a minute. The decision was made years and years and years ago in this county just to tax registered vehicles from DMV that made it easier and not taxing everything else, all, you know, your tools and farm equipment and all that stuff. And other counties have built up a list over the years, but we're jumping into it root hog or die here and going through 20,000 additional cars on the tax rolls in one year, and that's gonna, it's still gonna create some problems, but the issue's still saying that, is it worthwhile to send them a tax bill? And I don't, you know, if you read the code, it says that, you know, anything $20 or less, you don't need to send them a tax bill. It's not worth the hassle. So that may be the way we have to address these 17,000 cars that are valued less than $1,000. I mean, because all you're gonna get is grief out of sending them a tax bill. You know, they've been parked out in your garage for 20 years and never heard anything from us, you know, it's gonna cause some grief. And I really don't wanna go through all that grief, and she doesn't, and I don't know if y'all do, because we'll give you phone numbers out, I guess.
Well, you always have, Sam.
That's right.
Our personal property tax rate is two?
Twenty-seven.
Two-twenty-seven, so a $1,000 vehicle is more than $20 tax. I mean, are we talking about the threshold being a $1,000 vehicle, or are we talking about the threshold being $20 tax? So that's what?
The threshold is $20 tax. Vehicles less than $1,000, or $1,000 or less, that's for PPTRA. But, you know, these cars, by the way you go, is like $300 for a car, and that's probably where these 17,000 cars are gonna fall, at the $300 range, not at the $1,000 range. You're gonna be $300 cars.
Eight-hundred, eighty-one dollars.
Is the threshold for 20?
So, there'll be a lot of cars under that amount. I mean, you know, this, like David said, he's got a frame over at his house, he's still got a title on it, and it's worth what's a frame worth, you know? I mean, it's gonna create some issues, but I just, so we're probably gonna do that.
But the code leaves that up to you, the treasurer, to make that decision.
Well, we gotta get the, get the information, get it all assimilated, and then see what we're gonna do with it, you know?
I have one question about, I'll say fairness. Let's say that I have several vehicles, and then I have a vehicle that's right at the, you know, the $20 limit or whatever, and it shows up on my tax ticket. Steve has just that one vehicle that's, you know, $20, and so, well, I get taxed on mine, but he not his?
You'll get a tax ticket with a zero on it, and he'll, he won't get a tax ticket.
Okay, so it'll show zero for that account?
Yeah.
Unless it's a registered vehicle, then he'll get one with the $20 license fee on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. I'm just talking about the personal property tax, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, he'll get that, he'll have a zero, but it'll still have the license fee on it.
If it's a registered.
Yeah, we did a lot of those last year.
So a person's not gonna pay just simply because they've got other vehicles that a tax ticket is automatically, okay?
No, we have that figured out, that part.
Any other questions?
Is anybody else? Mr. Dalton, Scott, is there anything in our ordinance that we have to, that we need to change?
I think the PPTRA requires some kind of resolution once we determine what that number is gonna be.
We have to do that all the time.
We have to determine that number first.
But other than that, I don't know anything else that needs to be done. The decision lies in their office. What's gonna be assessed, what qualifies as PPTRA, and then whether or not they send the bill with less than 20 bucks a month. That's my understanding of it.
Does anybody else have any questions for Sam and Fay?
And there were no AG opinions or anything about this stuff, because we did check on that, too.
So, let me get this squared in my mind. If Housman has five cars, and one of them is, sits in his backyard that he's using parts for, and it's $300, when you send out the tickets for the five qualifying tickets, you're gonna include that car on his ticket.
Right.
And there's taxes owed, whether it's to $20, $12, or whatever. It's just that on a ticket of one person that has $20, you can elect not to send it. If there's, because if you're generating a tax ticket for everybody that's got one of those vehicles, they have a tax ticket, so that's not your judgment, it has to be on that ticket. Okay.
Okay, but that's sort of the opposite of what I, I thought then, I think.
Well, but he's not sending out individual tickets. My ticket has four vehicles on it, and I guess that's the reason I was asked that question. Once I get a ticket, it's gotta be on there.
But will the value be $12, or will the value, I mean?
I don't know.
If it's $12, the tax will be zero.
It'll be zero.
So, I mean, it'll be on there, but there will not be a tax part.
That's great. And if it's a registered vehicle, though, and there are a lot of those.
It'll be the $20.
It'll be the $20 license.
I don't know.
It will be, yeah, that's a different column over there, yeah.
Okay, I thought the $1,000 limit was for PPTRA, or was it, what, go ahead, Mr. Farley, I'm sorry.
My question is this, on the code that says you don't have to send the bill, it says the treasurer may elect not to send a bill amounting to $20 or less, as shown by the assessment book. But if I've got a bill for three other cars, and my bill's already above 20 bucks, and I've got a $500 car, and the tax is $15, then that's still on that bill, you're not creating a different bill for that.
You're gonna show the same rule.
So that bill still comes to me, and I pay the $15, you're not doing away with the tax. The code says you just don't send the bill of the amount of the bill of less than $20, I think, but I just looked at that today, so I'm not, I didn't catch that when we were talking the other day. So what you're, what may be an interpretation is, if I only have one junk car that's worth, the tax is less than $20, then you don't send me a bill at all, because you don't have to send a bill if the total bill is less than $20.
Yeah, but it also, remember, we talked the other day, you can't pick and choose which ones you wanna do. You have to send them, send them or not send them. If it's less than $20, you.
But if my bill's above $20 already, you're not sending me a separate bill, it's just on that bill.
I see what you're saying, you're doing the total of the bill.
So in the scenario I had, then I would indeed pay for my cheap car, I mean, as far as personal property tax, but Steve wouldn't, because that's the only one he has.
What's he?
Maybe, right.
Right, well, I mean, if, if that's the only one he has.
We gotta take into consideration what we can do to send to the printers, through the computer system. Picking and choosing like that's gonna be probably impossible. We're gonna have to put a threshold on there and live with it, is what we're gonna have to do. I mean, our computer systems aren't that smart to send all this stuff out like that, I don't think, where we can do it. I mean, we, if we're gonna put a threshold on it, we gotta live with it, period, so we can get them printed.
The question from the email you sent, Scott, does the, where it says you can exempt vehicles that generate less than $15 in tax, et cetera, from the $20?
That's the Commissioner of Revenue's job, from the assessment book.
You could exempt those that generate less than $15?
And then Sam doesn't deal with it at all, because it's not in the assessment book.
Yeah, that way it won't come over.
It never makes it in the sample.
But if it comes over, then we gotta deal with it a different way.
And a $5 difference in that, Commissioner can exist, you know, doesn't have to assess anything, it generates less than 15.
And then his is 20.
And then he goes up to 20 to say, I don't have to send a bill if it's less than 20. And I don't know the answer to that question Kerry's asking. You know, it may be a computer problem, but if I'm getting a bill of $150 anyway, got $15 tacked on to my bill, my bill's already above $20, so.
So by code, you have to bill for that vehicle.
That's a challenge for the treasurer to try to figure out. I'll help you, if I can.
Y'all gonna force me to retire tomorrow instead of next year.
Well, Scott, look into that today.
Well, it's gotta be post haste, because we need to get the tax tickets out.
Yeah.
Fay needs to finalize that book. You've finalized real estate, but not personal property.
She can finalize her job, and then Sam's gotta figure out how to send the bills there.
And she can, she can go ahead and take off everything, it's $15 or less.
Well, if that's what she chooses to do.
It's that for what, if that's what she chooses to do. Is there any more discussion on this issue? Okay, moving on. Sheriff Doug King, an issue of weapons purchase.
Morning, Mr. Sheriff.
Morning.
Before anything else, it said, no, I'm not suffering from beer, indeed, from the Board of Supervisors, nor am I getting ready for deer season. I've had some procedures done that won't allow me to shave, so here I am.
Hey, that's how I started out.
Well, trust me, the sooner I can get rid of it, the happier I'll be. Itches like crazy. Deputy Randy Mitchell, I've sent Mr. Dalton a notification on this, is retiring at the end of this month. He's been with With County Sheriff's Office for 19 years. He has 25 years total of his service in the criminal justice system, worked for Department Corrections prior to that, and is custom and allowed by code, allow him to purchase, or me, to purchase his weapon for him for $1. I believe he was your school resource officer.
He was, and he was, he was one of the first ones, and I, he was really good. I mean, he was one of those that had a good working relationship with the kids, and which meant that they would come to him if there was something, so.
Indeed.
So I'll, I'll make this motion that we allow the sheriff to do this.
Have a second.
I'll say.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Horni?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes.
And if the minutes will show that I paid the dollar.
You didn't write a check.
Not for a dollar. As far as trash goes, we're still enforcing, we've written a number of citations for that particular instance. As far as collections go, we do have the New River Valley Regional Jail Crew coming in this week for two days, so they'll be hitting the high spots.
And I've been working on getting another van, so District 3's gonna have one that runs surplus. It's on loan to Bluefield right now. They have one out of service, and as soon as they get theirs back in service, and I think they'll be sending litters out to each one of the counties and cities, you know, for anybody to purchase one.
That'd be good. I'd like to get that started back again. Very well met by the public. The only other thing I have to bring for you, we are right now in the process, and it's not a really complicated process, but there are certain elements we have to do. Each year Glock Corporation has a contest of some type. Basically what it does, allows the state that wins that particular contest to revamp their supply of Glock pistols for ridiculously low fee, to where we can update all of our duty weapons now. And my understanding of the deal, but I have to firm this up, it's only gonna be about $1,000 for us to replace all of our old Glocks that we're using now with brand-new Glocks.
A $1,000 to replace them all?
Replace them all. It's a heck of a deal. So, one that I feel like we don't need to pass up. I mean, we can get brand-new unused Glock pistols right now across the board with the generation fours. I think it's too good a deal for me to pass up, but I'll be sending.
You gotta trade in the old?
Yeah, just trade in the old weapons to, right now, it looks like town police supply will be the collector of our Glock firearms. But even after we turn, after we get new Glocks, we have a month before we have to turn in the old Glocks. I'll get back with that, the results of that shortly, and that's all I have.
Is it one for one? How many Berettas do we still have?
Well, now the Berettas won't count. We have to dispose of them in another manner, but we probably have 95% of our people covered with Glocks right now. The balance on Berettas, the regional jail authority employees that work part-time, I allow them to carry the weapon that they're qualified with at the regional jail with the permission of the superintendent. So we're not supplying a lot of weapons there if they're already qualified. Yes, Jim?
On the convictions, can we get any better coverage with paper about these trash convictions and tickets?
Only if the paper chooses to print it, because that's a court decision.
Well, maybe we'll see if Mr. Farley can make, I think it's great that we hear about it, but if the public don't hear that your guys are enforcing the littering laws, then the total impact is not there. If the paper would run it, or if Danny's morning show would talk about it, it would.
They used to run convictions all the time in the paper. They no longer do that. You want it?
Anybody else have any more questions, Sheriff?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, moving on, then, with the agenda, we have the Water Committee report.
All right, the Water Committee met on August 19, 2014, and recommended the following actions. Commended and appropriated 362,000. Amend and appropriate three hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars to nine zero five zero dash four six zero four seven for water transmission carrier.
Uh, come from committee, does it need a second, is any further discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Housman.
Aye.
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 Chair votes, uh, motion passes, anything else from the Water Committee?
Not that I know of. Baron Springs thing, nothing needs to be brought up immediately.
Nope.
Okay, move, moving right along, Budget Committee, Dr. Housman, since Mr. Hall's out here.
The Budget Committee met on August twenty-first, uh, and recommends the following actions, one, to amend and appropriate one thousand thirty-five dollars to, uh, uh, thirty-one oh-two-six dash forty-eight two-twelve, to replace the victim-witness assistant program computer.
Okay, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, is any further discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Housman.
Aye.
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 The chair votes, uh, motion passes.
Uh, the second thing, I don't think was, uh, uh, anything we needed to, uh, to vote on, it was just a, it was a general discussion about the possibility of, uh, of shortfalls in the, in Virginia State budget, that there may be, uh, uh, you know, uh, a directive coming down that, uh, the state will cut, uh, their funding through all their programs by, uh, by fifteen percent, or up to fifteen percent. And one of the things that we, uh, we discussed in the, in the Budget Committee, uh, is going ahead and, and asking, uh, departments to, uh, start preparing contingency plans for, uh, uh, for a fifteen percent cut from, from state funding. I, I think that that's what that, all that, that was, uh, Mr. Dalton, that was all that we discussed.
Yeah, well, we really don't know the particulars.
Right.
The governor has basically asked everybody to provide a plan of how they would reduce the budgets to all the secretaries and comp board, et cetera. The biggest fear, I think, when we talked about our biggest state funder, is through the school system. A huge cut prorated back over half of a year, period, would almost devastate them, and you're talking about three million dollars. So, uh, I think asking everybody for a contingency plan, if that's what the board directs, uh, just write a letter and send that out, and.
Do we need a motion on that?
I, I believe so, I mean, it's, it's gonna happen. I mean, there will be people that can't give you a contingency plan, and, uh, because they get very little or no state dollars.
Well, then I'll, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and make that as a motion, then, that we, yeah, we ask Mr. Dalton to, to send out letters to the department heads and different departments, uh, that receive Virginia State funding, to develop a contingency plan for, uh, the possibility of a, of a fifteen percent cut prorated over half a year.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
Don't ask when that is.
Say something.
Yes.
You know, we've asked these departments to cut their budgets for the last four, five years, I mean, is there a possibility of layoffs sometime?
I, I think that's sort of why preference, there's probably some departments that don't have a method to cut.
I seen in the paper this morning, what's not gonna affect the K, the higher education.
Okay.
The other ones are gonna be one of the.
I know we talked about, uh, the state having a five, ten, and fifteen percent plan, should we look at, you know, doing one for each?
Well, if they're protecting K twelve, which is fifty percent of the state dollars, uh, that's going to higher educator, K twelve, that only allows some very limited health department, DSS, constitutional officers. I mean, there's not a lot else to pick and choose from.
I, I didn't, did you say higher ed or, or K twelve?
I thought you said higher education.
Which is the colleges, community colleges and state universities, yeah.
Eight hundred, shortfall eight hundred something.
Mm-hmm, for the first one, yeah, this year. I agree with you a hundred percent, Coy, and we talked about it in the Budget Committee meeting, of what we've done to departments. We've held their salaries down, we've cut them to the bone, uh. I mean.
And without any, without a doubt, next year they'll be back in the, well, no, increasing wage, or we're gonna be.
Well, the, the other thing that we talked about too, was the fact that somebody should have seen this one coming. And that, uh, uh, you know, to, to do it now, after they've adopted a budget, is, uh, uh, is, is poor management and is, is unfair, and, uh, we talked about even suggesting that, uh, you know, write a letter to their representatives to, you know, let them know that, you know, this is really a hardship on the counties, and it's not our fault, it's the state's fault.
Any more discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Dr. Housman.
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes, uh, motion passes. Uh, moving right along, County Administrator, report. Mr. Dalton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I wanted to put this on the Water Committee, but, uh, I found it on my desk after our Water Committee meeting. I'd asked that, uh, the board approve change order number five for the Speedwell Waterline Phase One C. And that brings us completely up to date with all of, uh, the current changes, uh, that we've had, and the, and quantity adjustments. And that final, or the current eligible amount due to the contract would be two million eight thousand two hundred and thirty fifty cents.
I have a motion to approve, uh, change order fi- number five.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second, is any more discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
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 The chair votes, uh, motion passes.
Thank you, uh, the next item is a letter to Mr. Grant, that, uh, for OPEB calculations that are done every other year. Uh, the, uh, this wasn't included in the budget request through the Finance Department. The cost of that is nine thousand two hundred and ninety dollars, and I'd request that be amended and appropriated to the Finance Director's budget.
I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I don't wanna appear dumb, but what is it?
Uh, post benefits, anybody that retires in a state, it's mostly the school system.
Oh, okay.
You, you've gotta do all these calculations, how Gary Housman and Gene Horni's post, you retire early and you're still in the healthcare system, y'all are not, but if you were, well, how that affects the healthcare for all the rest of the employees.
So.
It has to be included as a expenditure shown in the audit.
So i- it's, it's working on projections?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Housman.
Aye.
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 The chair votes, uh, motion passes.
Thank you, uh, the next item is this VRS issue, uh, the VRS has requested a confirmation by vote from the Board of Supervisors, even though we provided a extract of the budget, that y'all know the certified rate of eleven point six-two, and you understand the result of, uh, adopting the certified rate in lieu of the, uh, reduced rate that you could have chosen, uh, the reduced rate means that you have to, to pay that back up in future years plus interest. This is the certified rate of what it requires to fully fund our VRS. And I would ask that that resolution be passed.
I have a motion, I'll make that motion, second. Any discussion on, uh, with resolution twenty-fourteen dash sixteen? Here and none, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Horni.
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes, uh.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, moving on with the agenda, County Attorney.
Um, the only thing I haven't mentioned is, um, Michael Thomas passed away, if you guys know who he is, he's the one that has had a lot of the dogs and, um, pen that was, uh, I guess objected to by some. He passed away, Animal Control took possession of the dogs on Friday, uh, Mr. Dalton asked if I could get an order from the court, transferring, to allow us to transfer the dog early, so we wouldn't have a waiting period. The judge signed that, uh, order yesterday, um, allowing us to transfer the dogs to a Humane Society that's been approved by the county, to, I guess, look for homes for those dogs. And I don't know how fast that's happening, but I know they will be kennelled at the Feds Office. The order does allow a waiting period, uh, to see if someone from Mike Thomas's family wants to come and pick up the dogs, uh, as their own. And I was wondering, Mr. Dalton's been asking Mr. Farley, um, to check with the family if he can find somebody in the family to ask for those dogs. It looks like a member had requested that today, that the dogs be turned over to them. So, if the family wants them, then that's what'll happen, uh, they have them clinging to them as being part of the estate, because the brothers and sisters will inherit from Michael Thomas, and they can come and pick up that property, because that's property of the estate. But that's what's going on.
Any questions, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Farley.
Okay, moving on, in the agenda, uh, Supervisor Report, we'll start with Mr. Dr. Housman, Black Lake District.
Well, uh, I've got three brief things, first of all, uh, I'd like to thank everybody for, uh, uh, the work that they did on the fire and rescue appreciation day, I think that some of us got a, uh, uh, an email from, uh, from Dale Mercer from a retreat, uh, I think that everybody was, uh, was very appreciative, and I think that one of the highlights was, uh, the fact that wings flew in and, uh, uh, people won, uh, helicopter rides through, uh, through a raffle process, and, uh, the food was really good, and, uh, I know that we didn't have as, quite as large turnout as we would have liked, but there were several things going on that day, and we, we just basically determined, you can't pick a day that there's not something going on. But I think that everybody that, uh, that was there had a, uh, had a good time, and I know that, uh, you know, Stephen and Jeremy and Kevin and, and James and Ike, everybody worked really hard to put it together, and I just want to officially say thank you. Second thing is, I'd like to request two in services, it can be for everybody, it can be for anybody that's interested, or it can just be for me. Uh, one is for the Everbridge system. I had, uh, someone, uh, that talked to me, they were, you know, not complaining, but they were just wondering how the system worked, because they got a, uh, when it rained hard the other night, they got an email, uh, and I've got a copy over here, it was like, uh, almost midnight, about, uh, flash floods, uh, possibility of flash floods. Then, uh, that morning, um, early, like, uh, about four-thirty, one of their cell phones went off, and about ten minutes later, their other cellphone went off, and then their home phone, uh, you know, went off. And I understand people, excuse me, sign up, you know, for that, but I would like to, to know just a little bit more about how it works, like, what constitutes an emergency, uh, you know, who decides, where does that phone call come from? How does it show up on caller ID, uh, you know, just some, some general questions like that. And again, everybody might be interested in that, uh, or it may just be that I have questions, but if, uh, if we could either set it up or set a time for, you know, me to talk to somebody so that I can get some answers, so I can answer questions when people ask, I would appreciate it.
Well, Dr. Housman, I think all of us could use a refresher course in, in Everbridge. I would be willing to listen to it.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I have had a, a, an odd number that showed up on my caller ID, and I have to tell you, I'm like a lot of people anymore. If you have caller ID, some of the, the odd looking numbers, you, you don't answer, because they're, you know, telemarketers, or, you know, or, you know, or whatever, so. Uh, and I don't know that that's, that that was Everbridge, I didn't even think about that till this morning, but, uh, you know. Those are just some, you know, some, some questions. Second thing I would like to request, uh, again, uh, you know, in-service, again, it can be for everybody, or whoever's interested, or it can just be for me, I, is, uh, you know, some in-service on the, uh, on the budget, especially if we're looking at, at some, some cuts from, from state money, kinda how state money comes in, how it's, uh, just, you know, disseminated through, you know, through the programs, uh, uh, yeah, there's just, yes, and, you know, I think that we all have that basic understanding of the budget, but I'd like to just be able to have a little more detailed, uh, understanding of it. So I would, I'd request that, but again, if nobody else is interested, can just, you know, I can make an appointment too.
Well, I think it'd be good for all of us to sit in on that too.
And so what I'm, I'm suggesting is just, I don't know if you call it a work session or just in-service, so that we can, uh, you know, maybe we can ask any questions and, you know, things that we would, uh, would like to, and, and then have a session where it's just, we just sit around and kinda question and answer.
If I may make a suggestion, on the Everbridge, if we could come in a little bit early at the September night meeting.
Okay.
Just come in about six o'clock.
And on the other, couldn't we do that on one of our day meetings?
Day meeting in September, after lunch?
Be here anyway.
I mean, that'd be fine with me.
And I did notice the Everbridge system, first alert I got off, went off on my phone, it had a different tone than it, it ever went off before. So I knew it was something new, so, uh, that's how I knew it was, uh, alerted, I mean, I don't know why my phone, if all phones do that, but my phone had a, my cellphone had a different alert.
What we'll do on the Everbridge is we'll just put it up on the screens, and just have it as a regular session, a work session before the meeting, and anybody that wants to, yeah, maybe we can do a press release, if you wanna come listen to the Everbridge.
Oh, that'd be good.
Then they can see the screen, I think the only way you can do it is just go into the Everbridge system and put it up on the screen, and let, let's just walk through it.
Well, I guess, the people that talked to me, or the person that talked to me, said that, you know, there are no danger of flash flood. Well, there not, they live on a hill, but people in the area are, and I know that you can't, you know, the Everbridge goes out to areas, I guess, it doesn't pick and choose specific homes.
Well, when, I guess the simple explanation is that you're getting national weather system alerts for With County. Everybody's getting that alert. Everybody's getting that alert.
Okay.
How many people are in danger of being flooded in With County? We've probably got twenty-five homes that we chronically have flooding problems.
And, and those are the types of things I think that would be good for us to know so we can answer questions.
And my understanding from James is those are being generated by the National Weather Service when that alert comes down. So it's no one down here picking and choosing. That's just when, when, when you signed up for it, if you're on the, and that's just the rest. Mine, I think when I was outside of the flash flood watch, I got it at four forty-one AM, calling my home phone.
Okay.
So I went in the next day, logged back into it and the one that I'd set up for me, I'd actually just checked all the weather things. So I was signed up for every watch on everything.
Oh, so you can go, I had to sign up?
You can go in and...
All that stuff that we need to know, that'd be good.
So I went in, took off all those watches that I'm not worried about and then it leaves me, if you only want warnings, you can get down, but I only have, if you don't even want to be warned of a flash flood warning, you don't object. I think that's actually default to everybody.
Okay.
Uh, you can go in and, and set them. We can go through those at the next meeting.
And quite frankly, I asked dispatch about it Monday morning because I got all those calls. They don't get them. So dispatch really doesn't get those calls about flood warnings. You've signed up or whoever signed up and checked that box. So it's an opt-in.
Okay. Well, it, yeah, there's sorts of things that...
It's more like signing up for an email account. Be careful of what you sign. You may get a million different emails.
Now, the people that filled out the paper form and turned it in are only signed up for like the seven warnings. It doesn't go to the flash flood watches or the flash flood batteries. It goes to like the tornado warning, the storm, winter storm warning. It's just like seven or eight default warnings that you get.
And if, if they're going to change the settings, they going through their phone? They going through the computer?
They, they log into the computer like how they opted in when they, when they signed up for it?
And that, that information's on the website, county website? Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. I took longer than I thought. Always does.
That's okay. Well, let's get, skip Westwiffle since Mr. Hall's not here. Eastwiffle?
Nothing of value.
Uh, Fort Chiselle District.
Nothing at this time.
Uh, Coy, led by the district. Uh, Spable District, Mr. Horny?
Nothing that I can think of.
And I have nothing to, to report this morning. Okay, moving on in the agenda, new business consent counter. Have a motion to approve the consent counter. That was second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion about the consent counter? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Ah.
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 Chair votes, uh. Motion passes, approved the consent counter. Uh, next item on the agenda is the With County Genealogical and Historical Association. Ms. Kegley? I know I didn't pronounce that right.
It's a mouthful. Uh, good morning Martha and gentlemen. Um, we are a genealogical and historical association. Everybody has trouble with those combination of words, so we call ourselves the With County Gee Haws. Yeah, just to make it easy.
That's good.
Uh, thank you so much for giving me some time this morning. Um, we are a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. We were chartered in two thousand and three. It surprised me to know that people from all over the country became members of our organization. Presently, we have three hundred and fifty members from thirty-seven states, Canada and Australia, and visitors to our office average four hundred to five hundred a year and from the same states in Canada and Australia. Also, we have visitors from England. This couple were looking for the home of George With. Well, they were four hundred miles too far west. That's in Williamsburg. But we also have had visitors from Scotland, Switzerland. The people from Switzerland came to meet their repast cousins. We've had people from Germany and New Zealand. We are a genealogy destination and we're known as a regional research center. Many people come from California, State of Washington, Texas, and of course, our neighboring states, North Carolina, Tennessee and Kentucky. And we keep records of where these people come from. Each year, we hold a, what we call a family history institute and with an average of about one hundred participants from either, one year it was eight states, another year it was from eleven states. We work with the tourism office and provide maps and brochures about the county to each of our visitors who come either to the office or to these meetings. Now, you know, visitors stay at our motels, eat at our restaurants, buy gas and other products while they are here, but this county is their destination for genealogy. They are here for the purpose of continuing their family research, learning more about their area and their ancestors. Many want to visit their ancestors' home places and visit the churches and the cemeteries that they were associated with, and they want to meet their cousins. We use that term loosely, but anyway, we want to meet people that were distantly related or otherwise. And the people, of course, come to research their family. Now, we've had several unusual situations in the office. One day, two women came from the State of Washington and the two women working in our office that day were descendants of Andrew Thompson. These two women signed in and they asked, what family are you working on? They said Thompson. And they said, well, what first name? And they said Andrew Thompson. So here was four people that were related to the same family on the same day. And I've had that personally happen to me. I have ancestors in New England and I've had two cousins that have come in and said, we are cousins. So every time I get emails from them now, it's dear cousin Mary. So, uh, it does happen that we're able to make connections. Many of the visitors are retired and are above average in income. They often plan a long time in advance so they can make this cross-country trip. One couple have actually driven across country from California three times to visit our office. This group is more likely to attend classes, more likely to visit the courthouse for family information and many return every year for genealogical meetings and we have those now at the new meeting center. In two thousand and fourteen, we had an idea to provide a tourism economic questionnaire to the people who came to our office. Now, this is very unscientific, but we did keep track of the people who came in since January two thousand and fourteen. And we had returned to us a hundred questionnaires and we discovered that these people came from twenty-two different states this year. They filled out the form, but we discovered also they brought other people with them. One party had eight people from the State of Washington. I don't know what it is, but Washington State gets in there often. The figures show that they spent eight thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars on lodging, thr- thirty-five hundred sixty-five dollars on gas, eight thousand seventeen dollars on food, ten thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars on other expenditures. One woman put a note on the bottom of the form. She was doing her shopping here to take back to her home state. Now, the total of the group was thirty-one thousand and forty-nine dollars, only a fraction of the total amount spent here by genealogy tourists and a small drop in the bucket. I realize that. So in two thousand and eight, five years after we started, we realized that we were growing very fast at our present location and we set aside funds for a building. And on August fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, we were able to purchase the former hardware store, later a daycare center at one sixty-five South Eleventh Street. And I'm sure most of you know where that's located. Now, we paid for the building, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars plus close, closing costs. And this was only possible in this short span of time because we had people from Pennsylvania who were willing to help us. And this is where I cry. Excuse me. I got a call from a woman from Pennsylvania saying that she'd like to make a donation. I said, that's fine. Check, money order, or we have an account at Edward Jones. She said, well, the check will be for two hundred thousand dollars. She and her husband immediately sent the check and that was on our tenth anniversary last year. I had never met this woman, but she knew about our organization. This year, when we had our family history institute, she and her husband attended. They spent four or five days in town looking at this building, which we had on our radar for some time. He's a retired engineer and he, um, looked at the building and thought it would be suitable. Before he left, he called me aside and said, Mary, we're going to give you another fifty thousand dollars. So they have contributed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this project. Now, as of August the twentieth, and this number changes daily because we're still getting money coming in for the building fund, but we have raised as of August twentieth, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. That includes the two hundred and fifty thousand from Pennsylvania. The remainder of eighty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six has come from members, friends and individuals from all over the country as well as Canada and Australia. There are no grant funds included, no government money included. However, now we are preparing grant requests and the sum of fifteen thousand has been set aside, uh, by our board for future repairs and emergencies. The renovations began this week. The building has eight thousand four hundred square feet and it has to have a handicap bathroom. The parking area has to be improved. And just this week, two of our members went over there and took out all the fence because that was in there when the children were, uh, using the building. We have our signs in, uh, in progress. The carpenter work, electrical updates and lots of paint are in the future. Also flooring, furnishings, additional bookcases and file cabinets as we've definitely outgrown our space at the present location. We have more than thirteen hundred books about regional history and genealogy and a collection of military records, obituaries, family documents, more than three thousand photographs and thirty-five thousand marriage records, which took one woman five years to copy from the courthouse records. We sell eighty books to the public. We have four meetings a year at our office and we give educational programs. We publish four newsletters a year and a journal once a year. We give genealogy lessons. We have three professional genealogists on our volunteer staff. Fifteen regulars keep the office open five days a week. Most other organizations, like ours, may be in their office one or two days a week and in the wintertime, they go south and close the doors. We stay open. Now, in the past, With County Board of Supervisors has been very supportive of our history-related projects. I don't know whether you remember the bicentennial celebration, but they supported that heavily and the publication of the county history. And then a few years ago, people from Texas contacted us and said, we'd like to give you some money to honor Stephen F. Austin. We'd like to have a monument put up to him down in Austenville and more than forty Texans came to celebrate when it was finished and the board approved funds to accomplish the construction. Our organization has two reasons to ask you for financial support. First one, to help us to continue to support county tourism, history and genealogy. Number two, to let the people from Pennsylvania and those around the nation, Canada and Australia, where the building funds have come from, to let them know you are anxious to support our meager efforts to put With County on the map. Now, I heard about the budget today. I'm not asking for a million dollars and I'm not asking matching funds for three hundred and thirty-four thousand. I'm not asking for two hundred and ninety thousand plus the closing costs and not even for two hundred and fifty thousand, but I am asking for ten thousand dollars to get us started with the parking lot, uh, the flooring or some of the other jobs that have to be done. And then I would ask you to support us for three more years. We realize that with nine sections of the building, this cannot be done all in one year. If you would like a tour of the building, I would be happy to take any of you that would like to go there. Just give me a call. Uh, Deputy Reeves has the contact information and thank you for listening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Kegley. I know that you, uh, you and, uh, your staff worked very hard. I see you in the courthouse and the clerk's office, uh, all the time, uh, collecting the information and stuff. Y'all spend a lot of time. And, uh, I know everybody and I appreciate all that, uh, that y'all have done for With County and everybody else in the nation as far as that goes. Uh, does anyone on the board have any questions for Ms. Kegley? And I, I did, uh, they have a packet with all the, with everything.
Thank you for giving it up.
And we'll consider your request.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next thing, uh, on the agenda is, uh, Planning Commission, Coleman Family Camp. Is that you, Mr. Burr?
What you have there is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for the approval of a special use permit for the Coleman's camp. This is located just, uh, I guess northeast of Mr. Hale on Miller's Creek Road. They have submitted all their information and the Planning Commission recommended this to the board.
Do you have the page at seven?
Yeah, I can, uh...
Seventy-nine.
I was almost to it. It starts on page seventy-nine. And just what are they requesting?
It's a, um, family camp site. Family camp site has four, four trailers. There are four campers there. They've submitted a site plan showing their four campers, their, uh, subject permit for the pit privy for there.
I, I, I was present at the Planning Commission when they discussed it. I mean, the Planning Commission is, is in favor of, uh, uh, of, you know, issuing a special use permit. So I would, uh, I would make that motion that we, uh, concur with the Planning Commission and, uh, uh, you know, issue the special, uh, use permit.
Okay, I have a, uh, a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I have a second.
Oh, second then.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Stephen, out of this long, drawn-out, excruciating process, did we learn anything or come up with any policies that's going to make it more uniform?
The, um, the biggest thing between this one and the other one that we have worked on, um, that the health department is looking at them much more closer on their side because of, of their regulations. Uh, what, what we submit to, you know, each, each group, um, is a request for the information to give us, their application letter, their campground site plan, uh, any entrance permits from B.D. may be required, road control if applicable, which most of the time these are, they're not, and then, uh, their, their sewage permit from the health department. You are correct. That has been a long, drawn-out process and most of it dealt with them getting their approval from... their approval from the Health Department, not any of the information from the Planning Commission. I do think that it's something that needs to be looked at at some point in time. Basically, all the ordinance states is that a special use permit shall be required for camps and parks for trailers, travel, trailers, and motorhomes. We put together an instruction list of things for them to submit to us, but I think it may be something that we want to look at between Planning Commission and the board, if there are other recommendations or ideas of the timelines, the process, or things that should be included in here.
Yeah, in reality, all these people are not aware of it. We've given permission for a place to be established that has no water supply and has no sanitary other than privy for fluctuating use. There's full-time residents there without these amenities, and then, at peak times, there can be 10 to 15 people there, still no water and no toilet facilities other than one common privy. So, you know, maybe we don't want it. Maybe we just have to re-grind this wheel every time, but we seem to be able to have a lot of regulations, and here's one gap, and all those summer places or weekenders are sort of ignored until something comes up, and then we have to make a decision based on each application. And that's what seems to me, that it varies in scope, as it should, but it also makes a lot of work, where if we had some kind of policies that dealt with these part-time or recreational use.
I mean, for your water and things like that, we could look at, if you're recommending adding those into our manufactured home ordinance to say, "All campgrounds shall have, approved water source shall have," things like that, we can incorporate those things into it. Right now, it doesn't say that, and we require on the Health Department, those on our guidelines, we require on the Health Department to approve it as, you know, an approved subject system, and that's one thing that they came back over and talked to us after going through this one and looking at the next one. And I don't remember the number, but there is a number of camp sites on there that they require to have an approved water source. And that is where I was saying the Health Department has made some changes in saying, "These are the things that we are going to make certain are in place before we issue any of our permits to you." And I think that's the thing you're looking at, seeing. Now, if you want us to include those in our ordinance that says those items, we can certainly add those.
Well, I think you ought to consider it. I'm not advocating making any more regulations, but it's not just these campground. You know, qualifying and general use of a word is what bothers me. You know how I feel about the way y'all throw the word subdivision around? Totally out of context, but it's in ordinance. A campground, you would think, is a place that people camp and pay a fee to be there. We've got several of them in the county. But this broad scope, when does it go from being a residential or a vacation site or a weekend site to be in the campground? Is it's amount of people there? Is its amount of structures there? That's what I'd like to probably look at and try to come up with some unified approach to this thing, instead of each one of them being different, and we try to find a rule that applies.
So, you're advocating rewrite this ordinance and add a section in there for family campgrounds or recreational campgrounds, that here are the requirements that are, this is a local requirement, and it could be different. I mean, the Health Department will tell you, you know, they've got certain things, and there is a certain number of trailers that kicks them into the next.
In the district, we've got four or five for-profit, maybe six for-profit campgrounds. We readily realize that a trailer park is something else, don't we? But for these family gathering points that maybe are used two to four times a year, or they might be like the one we're dealing with, right now, it's occupied full-time. But my point is that them and some of these individual property sites have no water and no toilet facilities, and that only happens in certain areas. It certainly doesn't happen in Stephen's neighborhood or in Gary's neighborhood, but it's out in the rural area because of lax policies in the past, which the sheriff is an authority on that, of certain areas of the county have changed, and that change has brought about a need to look at the way you're handling these things.
And I agree with you, Eddie. We, this is so vague and doesn't give enough information, doesn't give enough guidance. I think your idea is the best thing we could do is pull this together, determine, because it doesn't say what's family, what's travel, what, and trying to establish those definitions so we can have the same set of qualifications for each one of them, or how it needs to be. We can certainly start drafting that together from the Planning Commission side and look you all for input.
One of the cleanest ways, I would think, for a quick determination or a general determination, is it for profit or is it not for profit? If people charge other people to be there, they ought to be under a more strict regulation. There's language already in the state code about using property for recreation, that if you allow somebody to hunt on your property, you're protected by statute from them suing you. You're familiar with that, aren't you, Mr. Dalton? Two pieces of state code says that, that as long as I don't charge you for being on the property, that you're not liable. You can find those, Scott, under DJIF, and they're published in the Game Commission books every year. But if somebody charges for use of that property, doesn't it seem logical that they should be under a stricter standard than if you had adult children and they come and camped on your property or put a camper on?
I've talked about this now, let's move on.
Well, Mr. Hale, if you'd like the Planning Commission, if you'd make a motion to direct the Planning Commission to rewrite those sections and bring it back to the board?
Well, we have, we have one motion on the floor, a second, to accept this from the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll do that first. Is any more discussion on the variance, exception? Here, none, the overall vote, Mr. Housen?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Now, if you want to make a motion, Mr. Hale.
I'll just make a motion that they study it, make a recommendation back to the board, so this doesn't keep reoccurring without direction.
Do I have a second? Second. Any more discussion?
I, but you're not talking about somebody personally going out and being restricted from building a, like a dry cabin?
No, I'm just saying that you ought to have some way they do that, and I don't think you mean for that dry cabin to have four trailers there with it and that people live there all the time. That's not what you're talking about, is it?
No.
Okay. That's a condition we need to look at.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, motion passes. Okay, next item on the agenda is Salem Stone Vacation Request. Mr. Dalton.
I'd already moved on to looking up those code sections. We have a request from the Jackson Law Group, Tommy Jackson, to consider the vacation of a subdivision where they currently have a permit for a rock quarry. Mr. Jackson has quoted a few of the sections of code that we can do that. I'd asked the county attorney, Mr. Farthing, to research it. He's got some comments on that. I would, I think we probably need a sit-down meeting with Mr. O'Brien and Tommy to give them, we can do exactly, I think, what they want, but that may impede them from doing some other things with their property in the future, and we'd like the opportunity. But if, with that sit-down meeting, we'd like to, whether, Scott can explain the two options we have, of whether just vacate it without a public hearing or go through the public hearing process.
Well, in that case, I can just table this request until y'all.
Well, if they decide, instead of tabling it, if we may, if we have the meeting, which I think we can have post haste, if they decide to vacate a portion of it, then it's just a pure action by the board without a public hearing.
So we can go ahead and approve?
Yes.
And y'all can work out the details of the plan?
Yeah, there's, and as maybe everybody knows, for the vacation of this, there is a future roadway that the county would like to see part of this discussion, a relocation of Kent Lane, the entrance. So if we can have an opportunity to sit down and meet them and bring back our recommendations, unless somebody sees a problem with the vacation of this plan.
So, do you want to go ahead and vote on this request?
I think if it's okay for, if that's the direction we can take, I think, and we can bring it back to the next day meeting or night meeting, that's what we'd like, if we may.
Does anyone on the board have any problems with that? Okay. I'll move right along with transportation, Transportation Service District report, Mr. Burr.
That's just an update on two Transportation Service Districts that are remaining, Vineland and Hidden Valley. Vineland, Wetstone, as you can see, basically should have a significant decrease in their tax rate for their final year, next year, and Hidden Valley, next year, should see about a profitable 20% reduction in their tax rate. No changes need to be made to the rates from this year on either one of those districts.
Okay. Does any board member have any questions for Mr. Burr? Here are none. Appointments, Mr. Dalton.
Appointments, as some of you know, that we've got, the community college had called us and said our appointment of, they adopted new regulations at the state level, Community College Board, that former employees cannot be members of the college board, which makes our appointment of Mr. Morgan. Null and void, we need to consider that, and the second portion of it, I think, on appointments, we will currently have a policy in effect of you can only serve two terms on any, any board. I think if the Personnel Committee or the Budget Committee could consider and look at that and see if that's, will we want to continue or not, and the reason for that is, we advertise frequently for applications, and we just never get any applications for people that want to serve. I don't know how else we can get out and recruit people.
I have had some people ask me, have we been putting it in the paper or just on
So we have a lot of appointments coming up that are only every few years, Board of Assessors, Board of Equalization.
Well, you won't, you know, I think we need to try to run it on the website and maybe run it in the paper too, and just see what we, what we get back.
Okay.
And come back at the next meeting.
Another thing we would like to, we might send a letter to some of the service clubs, Kiwanis, Ruitans, Lions Club.
That'd be a good idea, too.
Okay. We can do that. So, press release, little campaign letter to the, all the service clubs, Kiwanis, Ruitans, Lions Club, Rotary, Retired Teachers Association.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
We also want personnel to look at.
Well, I think we need to evaluate that. We made that rule, is, if you can't get applications, why do you kick, eliminate a good person that's been productive from consideration just because they've served two terms if you can't find adequate?
But I just, I didn't know if you need the board to tell you that.
Well, the Personnel Committee is going to be meeting in a few weeks, or pretty shortly here, so if the board can, or if y'all want it to go there so we can discuss it and bring back a recommendation.
I think just send it to Personnel Committee and let them discuss it. Okay, we're down to other. Mr. Dalton, we have any other business coming for the board at this time?
I do not.
Any board member have anything else to come for the board?
Yes, I do.
That's Mr. McRobbins.
We're going to be on ground meeting, I believe, next Tuesday. I have a doctor's appointment to change that to.
What time do you want it? What time do you want it?
Well, mine, doctor's appointment tomorrow, about eight o'clock. Can we have you on the ground Tuesday?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We can change that to Tuesday evening or?
We will make it so, four o'clock?
I don't know. I'll have you put you up.
Just get me home before dinner. It's okay, by me. So the meeting time for the Building and Grounds Committee meeting has been changed from eight AM to four PM? Okay, here are nothing else. We have some personnel matters that we need to discuss in closed session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that With County Board of Supervisors convene a closed meeting to discuss the following as permitted by Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1, involving personnel.
Could you add legal consultation?
And I would add, which, also, Section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel.
Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor say aye. We're now in closed session.
That we come out in closed session?
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we adopt the following resolution, certification of closed meeting, whereas with County Board Supervisors convene a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the with County Board Supervisors that such meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the with County Board Supervisors hereby certify as it to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the with County Board Supervisors.
Have a second. I do a roll call vote, Dr. Housen?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I have another motion. I would make the motion that we accept the letter of resignation from, from Mr. Chip Dunford, our building official, effective September the fifth, two thousand and fourteen, and that we name Mr. Bill Bone as the interim building official, building inspector, until that position can be filled.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a little roll call vote, Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Any other motions? We need to.
We need a motion to let the county minister handle the deal over the deal. Do we need that software? Let you, let the county minister, you stay able with?
Reevaluate the software. Have a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay. You have your informational fact, Mr. Dalton, does anything else to bring before the board at this time? I'll remind everyone, me and Mr. Dalton has a meeting with the other entities of the airport, Mountain Empire Airport, tomorrow afternoon. Yeah, Thursday afternoon, I'm sorry, I'm a day ahead of myself. Does anyone have any specific questions they want answered?
About the airport, you're very capable of letting those people know that this is an open-ended debt with that cut through the hill up there.
Hopefully, this is what we hope to have. Joe, after, after we create a medium, a resolution that can help. Now, one of the important sponsor agents, whatever federal legislation, gives some clear directions on, that they have to have full approval of all the sponsor agents before they enter in the contract or improvements there. That is one, as rest assured, because they never have. That federal register number that he kept spouting out says in there, the sponsor agency, they have to receive approval prior to receiving.
Well, I guess what I really see with those other entities that appear to be supporting it, they bully them into coming here to talk to us. It can do the life package. Next year, we're going to be asked to pay our part of that. We're already paying on the terminal building. If, if they can't determine how many thousand cubic yards of rock they're going to take out of that hill up there, that's an open-ended, we're going to pay our part of that. Then in sixteen, we're going to repay it, we're going to pay our part of that. So just so everybody realizes, our assessment could get up to a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars a year.
On our agenda, we've asked for presentation, consulting, scheduling, the total cost for that front, the breakout is, of that cost, members. Because you've got to know that upfront. We've asked for a schedule and costing of all future projects, non-operation, laid out by years, two percent, one percent to that, so that we can have an estimate that we can bring back to talk.
Well, Delta cannot give you a clear opinion because they're tied at the wallet to every one of these projects. There's no competitiveness, they are one of the few that can do that work. And the more the job costs, the more they're going to give.
Well, and we've asked for a copy of the contracts that they, open contracts they have, not only the terminal bill, didn't ask for Delta's contract, but we can ask for that to see how it is. And that could end up, if we, at the end of the day, with all those contracts, I think the direction, the resolution can be made, and we're not going to fund anything unless contracts are presented to us before they're done.
Did Cameron Wolf do the terminal building?
He was, he subbed down under Bill.
So Steve heard this thing and it, it just bothered him. Will Leonard got up there and said, this money was going to be spent whether we took it or not. So we didn't really want it, but we wanted to take it. Now, you, we now have, what, three more years to pay our part on that? And we didn't have a voice in that, from what you told me, that was a done deal, that they'd already applied for it and had approved.
They had it approved, but it wasn't a done deal. We had to read and sign up on the other side of the deal and some more obligations, and it never happened.
Right. But you got handed it on a plate and said?
That, that part we did. I mean.
Well, there's four more big items that are on big plates.
Yeah. And on the same subject, like this project we talked about, we're talking about, could be a lot. When I was at the airport the other day, looking around, sneaking around, there is six approaches approved for that airport.
Right.
You can eliminate one of those approaches at any day, which would eliminate the project for this life package. If members of that airport don't have a forty-five degree approach, the approach, what they're clearing is for this forty-five degree approach to the tractor and west. There's a forty-five degree approach on both sides, each direction. Then there's the approaches straight off the runway. And then there's a forty-five approach that is sent to the line, east or south, whatever that is. So that's their proof. If I read those regulations right, you can lose one of those that might affect conditions. Generally, the aviation standards are there. Those are what they want to come. What you're doing is you're coming across that hill at forty-five, and when you get to the runway, you're straightening up the lane.
Right.
And.
With the prevailing wind there, you would seldom do that if you were pilot. If, if you can come in there and approach dead into the wind, that would be your preference, wouldn't it?
Well, when the governor's playing land the other day, it came straight in. There was, there was no sideways approach, no forty-five degree. There's probably a lot we don't understand about the, about the airport.
There's a lot of stuff you understand about the dynamics of flying a plane. And that whole thing out there makes no sense to anybody that's, that controls in their hand. It's just, it's, maybe there's a pot of money and we've got to spend this money.
Well, you know, I don't like the idea of them saying, you know, we have to do this. The FAA says we have to do this.
Well, we will have the, I understand, and we'll be the first ones to begin the aviation, discuss whether we have to do it.
But that's what we, we've been told from Mr. Leonard and the whole bunch.
Don't believe it's going to touch you.
No.
Well, we know about getting healed and, you know, about their height, the cost is still making money.
And I don't believe there's as many rockets. That's what's in that affair.
Got any suggestions or questions?
Email them to Saleo. And, oh, the meeting in Thursday?
Yeah, Thursday.
At the airport, conference room?
Our, agenda Thursday is taking a tour of the airport. Look at this page, look at this right, see it? They're supposed to have all the plans, you have not one sheet, all the plans on the price, so we can understand and then ask questions. It's Delta, Delta and Spirit.
Well, he'll have his legal counsel Wednesday, so he, they could have a chat. Yeah, that, that young lady attorney, she's a Delta employee attorney. And then she would hear it's public hearing, except now. One of the questions that I think with y'all's meeting, what's a rental on Hangar Seven? What is that agreement?
Well, there's, there's provided a conference, there are contracts, how do they procure it for us first? I find it interesting, on Hangar Seven, when I looked at their website, it says, only Curtis Pinn. That's their website, it's only Curtis Pinn.
I know that the other FAA certified mechanics, as far away as Ronno, complained that he's got a deal up there that he can beat everybody's price. And that's just like selling gas at cost. You can get a lot of people come in there if you're not making any profit on the gas. That hasn't happened, but they believe it. Now, if Curtis is operating a business and paying no overhead, is that, that's not fair to all other mechanics. And it's more of a convenience for those guys that need to work on their planes, hopefully. What was the answer on the, how they got the tax deal they got?
They have no response from the state. Their limited response was, the nation has changed the way they assess the price.
On Thursday's meeting, we're going to try to be out there to meet with the Secretary of Commerce or have any updated times or?
He's got his time, an hour here.
Well, is that, is that, what time did JIDA meet, that same day in?
Maybe in the afternoon.
They met at three.
And Mr. Jones will be here in a.
Thursday morning?
I thought he had a conference call with the governor at ten, or was that nine?
I'll send you the schedules.
Last thing I brought on these other developments there was, if you talk to Jeremy, tell him he might be getting a call for, for Hill, or what, one of y'all won't call him, as if the Department of Ag.
He called me?
He did?
Yeah.
Travis, Travis Hill.
I'm surprised. And he said he would, I'm still surprised.
Before we adjourn, Mrs. Kegley's request, is there any money in the tourism committee, I mean tourism budget, which I think it's really what it should come out, out of, or part of it anyway? Or what do you say? I, I, I. I don't know. I was, well, it was last night I was there, but I didn't see her. Yeah, I think it's, you know, I just think we need to, we need to look at it. And there are a lot of people. I mean, I think it is a real benefit to West County is what they're doing. Is to do work. Why don't you, why don't you get with, why don't you get with Ms. Kegley and go, just go over some things that we, you know?
Because if they've got layout out of that.
Oh, it's.
Every more.
Maybe something that, you know, we can do that, we wouldn't have to pay the construction cost. And they're paying construction cost to have it done. That sounds like a plan.
Tuesday afternoon, Troy goes up to the conference, Tuesday morning.
At four PM.
Yeah.
Do we have anything else? Do we have anything else? If not, I'll adjourn this meeting.